Okay, we'd like to call the Planning Commission to order tonight and ask our Commissioner, Adam Ruiz, to lead us in the flag salute, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you guys would please join me in the pledge. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Reese. And roll call, please.
Commissioner Hagel is, has an excused absence. Commissioner Ruiz.
Here.
Solis.
Here.
Watts.
Here.
And Chairman Charlie Trejo.
Here.
Okay. So, all right, we're gonna go ahead. Do we have any public comments that are on, that are not on an agendized item?
We have not received any public comments.
All right, I'll go ahead and read on the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Still images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to Planning Commission at TemeculaCA.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54. Okay. Number one on the consent calendar is for the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve.
There's a second item, too. Page two.
Would you like to take both items together?
Yeah.
Both one and two?
Yes. So, one and two. The first to approve the minutes and second to approve the director's hearing summary report.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Solis and a second by Commissioner Watts. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm gonna approve, although I was absent, I did watch the video back for the minutes, just for clarification.
Okay.
So, I will approve for both.
Okay. All right. Motion carried. So then we will move on to our business. We have number three, our complete streets policy. Do we have a staff report?
Hi, yes. So, just a little introduction. The complete streets policy, we have our consultants here to do a presentation as they're setting up. This is gonna be one of the working tasks of the general plan update. So, we've been working with Fair and Peers here, Katie and Angelica, on drafting a complete streets policy. This is a receive and file, so an informational presentation. So, they're gonna kinda discuss more in depth what complete streets is and what we've been working with them on. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and hand it over to Fair and Peers.
Hello. Hello. We're waiting for our presentation to display for you.
Gary and I had a subcommittee meeting with them, but we recognized them from the screen in the room.
We are real people.
Was not in person.
Now they're 2D and now they're 3D.
Now they're 3D.
Yes. It's getting up. What makes me nervous? Okay. We practiced this, by the way, and everything went smoothly. Super smoothly.
It's that technology. Awesome.
Normally, we have a crowd of about 100, so you're lucky.
That's good. Maybe I'll try doing this way.
There you go. It did something.
It did something.
Yeah.
So, I am Katie Cole. I'm a principal of Fair and Peers of about 20 years of experience doing transportation planning and engineering, and I have worked with Temecula on a couple of things. You may recognize me from VMT, so helped you with that implementation. And I'm joined here today by Angelica Rocha, and I'll let her introduce herself.
Hi, everyone. I'm Angelica Rocha. Nice to meet you. I am a senior transportation planner at Fair and Peers and have five years of experience and excited to be working with the City of Temecula on this. It's been a great project, and I grew up in Escondido, and so I have very strong memories of coming to Temecula as it grew as a city. So, excited to be here with you all and working on this project.
Just in case you needed to see us in 2D, you can see us on the screen.
We do have a backup.
Hey, Mike, I can use the USB over here and control it from this computer. Okay.
All right. Drumroll. Here we go. We're gonna talk about the complete streets policy. And so, I'm gonna talk a little bit high level about complete streets, so you can go to the next slide. And just kind of what are complete streets? Complete streets is, basically, it's a transportation planning effort. That's a national effort, really, and it's all around a concept that we are trying to accommodate everybody on streets and really design streets for all users, so pedestrians, bikes, public transportation, all ages and abilities. One thing I like to point out, though, is it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to be putting, you know, bike trails or, you know, really wide bike lanes on every single street. It's really context sensitive. So, you're looking at streets in a way that you're considering everybody and figuring out what makes the most sense for that street, given the land uses along that street and the needs of that street. So, it's really just an effort to think about all of the users of the street and design streets in a way that would accommodate everybody at an appropriate level. We can go to the next slide. So, really, for Temecula, the, what we, what we have prepared is a complete streets policy. So, really, putting down on paper the process that Temecula will follow for implementing complete streets in the city, and it's really all things that are already happening in the city. It's really just an effort to kind of take all of the good work and the way that planning is done in the city and write it down. And the goals for this project was to complete the framework, so putting down on paper, complete streets implementation, kind of just formally demonstrating a commitment to complete streets, providing some written down goals and values around complete streets infrastructure, encouraging active transportation, which really has a benefit for health and reducing VMT and achieving climate goals. And this will inform the general plan update, and you'll see later there are some state regulations that kind of require this formal effort, and Angelica will talk a little bit about that. So, I will go ahead and turn it over to Angelica. She's gonna talk to you a little bit about stakeholder engagement and the process and then get into some of the details of the policy.
All right. So, as part of this effort, one of the mechanisms or one of the deliverables that we've been doing as part of this has been engaging various stakeholders. So, this is, this slide's just to kind of show you all the effort that's been in progress. So, this effort's been collaborative with a staff working group from various divisions within the city, as well as several presentations. So, we met, as you've mentioned, that we had a Planning Commission Subcommittee meeting. This commission meeting is also part of that stakeholder engagement. We'll present to the Traffic Safety Commission next week and then prepare for council adoption at the end of November. So, just to provide some background on this effort, so the complete streets policy, as Katie mentioned, really sets forth the city's commitment to complete streets and really formalizes how the city will integrate complete streets into transportation, planning decision, and roadway design. Also, in advance of the upcoming general plan update, the California Complete Streets Act, or Assembly Bill 1348, requires that all cities who develop a complete streets ordinance, or I'm sorry, have a general plan update, develop a complete streets ordinance. As also mentioned previously, this is really building on the momentum that the city has already been moving forward. So, thinking about how this effort builds off of existing planning documents, such as the Multi-Use Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan, the Temecula Quality of Life Master Plan, the Local Road Safety Plan, and the Urban Forest Management Plan. In addition to California Assembly Bill 1358, the movement to make cycling and walking and public transportation more feasible, oh, sorry, next slide. We have two, two things going on. The movement to make, you know, more modes more accessible is supported by other California legislations, and these are just a couple of them. So, Caltrans formally adopted complete streets, as well as a California AB 1358. There's also several assembly bills and climate-related bills that are aimed at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and this is all part of that ongoing movement to make, promote other modes. So, in developing this policy, we set a number of guiding principles with the help of the staff working group. And so, some of those were, the first one is serving all users and modes. So, this is really thinking about developing a context-sensitive network, making it accessible and comfortable for all ages and abilities. The second is to increase transportation and mobility options. So, how do we incorporate walking, biking, and public transportation into planning and construction endeavors? The third is to establish a multimodal connected network, so really expanding and enhancing the existing network, and I, proactively identifying opportunities to fill in gaps and striving to make a harmonious balance between the needs of vehicle movement as well as the needs of other modes. The fourth op, the fourth guiding principle is coordinating land use, so thinking about how to balance and create a modern integrated system that thinks about what is the current and what will be the future travel demand of your residents. And then lastly, really preserving community character. So, what does the transportation system look like that might be able to reduce car dependency but can also enhance quality of life for all residents? And so, thinking about, so what does this policy apply to? So, this policy will apply to all of the roadways that the City of Temecula has authority over, so things within the public right-of-way. And when we think about what that looks like, this will be a very context-sensitive approach, so giving significant consideration to the stakeholders and the community values, as well as thinking about what the land use looks like today and what future anticipation might be coming. So, some of the key steps to implementing this complete streets policy will require really ongoing coordination, and so continuing to collaborate with stakeholders, internal and external. So, the implementation really includes this integration of complete streets principles into all of the plans and policies. We mentioned the general plan, but this will continue through all of the city's next phases of manuals, ordinances, and programs. This also helps solidify an internal decision-making process that allows the city to ensure that complete streets are considered in all transportation-related projects, when feasible and appropriate. This will also really promote collaborations between various coordinate departments and divisions. Some of those are mentioned above, but really highlighting the, the necessary collaboration between planning, traffic, CIP, land development, and fire. And lastly, I'll close with just kind of bringing it home to how this will relate to the general plan update. So, the complete streets principle will really guide the circulation or mobility element, and by adopting this policy, the city is really directing the agency planners and engineers to design and operate the entire right-of-way to prioritize safer, slower speeds for all users. And the roadway classifications in this general plan update might look like the right-hand side typical cross-sections, so thinking about how we can redesign certain streets, like your collectors with large or small right-of-ways to neighborhood residential streets, and really thinking about how we want the city to look like in the future and how you might consider all of the modes. And that's it. And we'll open for questions?
Okay. Any questions from my colleagues? Questions?
I have one.
Oh, you do have one? Yeah, go ahead.
Does this policy address street parking, specifically, street parking? Because all the new laws that are coming in are basically eliminating any requirements for parking on the streets, and I have a real big concern that where are people gonna park their cars if, if that's the case? So, I don't know if they intercept the, the law that requires that, the new laws. Get my, okay.
Yeah, and it, this doesn't necessarily change the ci, or it doesn't change the city's parking requirements. So, the city's parking requirements that are established will remain as is. The complete streets policy might take into consideration the width or when parking is required as part of these kind of roadway classifications, but thinking about complete streets. Complete streets is not just for bicycles, pedestrians, transit riders. It also is trying to consider how to make things more efficient for roadway users of all types. So, this will also include vehicles as well, and I, I don't foresee this really impacting or changing any of the city's regular, parking regulations.
Excuse me, and I'll just add to that. An example would be the Uptown specific plan. There are parking requirements in the cross-sections. Lot of times, parallel parking is required or angle parking, and that helps with slowing down a lot of the traffic when there is excess right-of-way, and we're especially sensitive to parking requirements as we work on SB 9 and a lot of these housing ordinance, so we share your concern.
Yeah, well, that is my concern, and it's not so much the future streets, for instance, in Uptown, but our existing residential streets as we continue to move into these new housing laws and the requirements. So, it's just a big concern, and I wanna make sure it's not precluded by this policy, and it's not.
It's not.
Good. Thank you.
Good question. Question, Fernando?
I, I understand that, you know, these are all for public right-of-way, but many communities have unimproved roads. They're like, they don't, they act like alleys, but they're not real alleys, like they're not paved, they're unimproved. Is this some kind of plan for you to incorporate maybe those types of areas to connect to the public right-of-way? Do you guys have, is that part of the policy program, or is that?
I, would you like to answer this? Or I can, I can take a first pass. Okay. I think it depends on who owns the land. So, I know certain, you mentioned that some of these are not within the city's existing right-of-way. Is that correct? Are these on sort of like?
So, like, for example, like my community where I live, there's a lot of roads, right? But they're, they're unpaved. They're like dirt roads that act maybe like, maybe access, like utility access? I, I don't know. But in newer communities, there's also, I noticed that when I walk around, there's some of those unimproved roads also. So, are those taken into consideration when, I know, I know you made a note about connecting kind of the communities together. Is that an option, or is that something that you guys are looking into?
So, they're somewhat connected. Complete streets is a policy that will be absorbed into the general plan and be made part of the circulation element, and then as we go through the general plan update and we look at closing those gaps and making those connections, that's when we'll look at connecting or improving dirt roads, and then when we do improve them, looking at all modes of transportation to make that happen.
Okay. Feels like it's a guideline, the complete streets.
It is. It's formalizing a process that we're already doing, and I think we're proud to say that we've been doing this. Our transportation engineers, our traffic engineers, whenever we have a pavement rehab program or there's improvements to the sidewalks, they're always looking at the Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan. They're coming over and talking to planning and saying, hey, we can, we can put this bike lane in here, we can do this, what about the sidewalk? So, we're really just formalizing an existing process, and, and we need it on the books.
Okay. Good. Any other questions? No? Okay. Anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just got up in case, I did, in case there were additional questions that I could address, but it sounds like we're good.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions, then this is a business item, receive and file, so thank you for your presentation and safe trip home.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We will move on to the public hearing, and I will go ahead and read. "Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of their projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to PlanningCommission@TemeculaCA.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54." All right. So, number four, long-range planning project number LR 22-0664, amending Title 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code as detailed in the proposed ordinance attached here as Exhibit A. All right. Mark, you're on.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chairman. Ooh, forgive me, Commissioners. All right. As mentioned, this microphone seems very loud, forgive me. A little sensitive. Tonight, we'll be discussing LR 22-0664, which is the Housing Element Implementation Ordinance. Sitting before you is a copy of some definitions. I just wanted to have that in front of you beforehand. We're gonna be going through a lot of different proposed new land uses, and the definitions can be a little overlapping, if we will. So, I just wanted to have the black and white in front of you, so there's no confusion or we're not misspeaking on any of these. So, go ahead and get started. So, the Temecula Municipal Code was originally adopted by the City Council in 1990, and since its adoption, the Temecula City Council has periodically made amendments to improve various sections of the code, to improve its clarity, processes, and implement state law. This zoning ordinance, or this proposed ordinance, would amend Title 17 zoning specifically. The Planning Commission's role, the Planning Commission is required to review and make recommendations to the City Council regarding zoning regulation amendments to Title 17 of the Municipal Code. Little bit of history of the, of this item. It went to the Planning Commission General Plan Update Subcommittee on the 20th of September. It will be going to the City Council General Plan Update Subcommittee on the 24th of this month. It's in front of you today, and it will be going to the City Council on November 14th. So, what is a housing element? Since 1969, California has required that all local governments adequately plan to meet the housing needs of everyone in their community. This is accomplished by adopting a housing element as part of the general plan. Housing elements are updated every eight years, referred to as a cycle. Presently, we're in the sixth cycle, covering years 2021 through 29. Temecula's housing element, our sixth cycle, was adopted by the City Council on February 8th of 2022 and approved by HCD on December 15th of the same year. Our housing element was approved and deemed compliant with state law based on proposed and continued actions of the city. This ordinance implements the changes as required by HCD. Little bit of background, some HCD housing element compliance incentives. These are some incentives for municipalities to have a compliant housing element. Some of them include permanent local housing allocation funding, local housing trust funds, SB 1 planning grants, infill infrastructure grants, regional transportation funding, and other funds. The big one for compliance incentives is financial. And on the other side of the coin, there's the non-compliance consequences. For a general plan inadequacy, the city could lose its loss of permitting authority, and development would be approved under builder's remedy. Financial penalties for the city, legal actions and attorney fees, potential court receivership, and others. And here's some real-world examples of non-compliance of housing elements. There's several here throughout the state. When a city loses its land use authority, it comes under a builder's remedy, which is a provision within the 1990 Housing Accountability Act, and it's gone largely unnoticed until these housing elements lately have become more and more stringent. City staff and our consultant work tirelessly with HCD to achieve a compliant housing element. The policies and programs within the housing element were previously adopted and agreed to with the adoption of Temecula's housing element. This proposed ordinance implements those changes. We'll get right into it. I just wanna point out to everyone here, you'll see a black box at the bottom of most of these. These are excerpts from letters we received from HCD during our process, going back and forth, trying to gain compliance for a housing element. So, when there's something there, this is the reason why we are doing it. So, the proposed ordinance, starting out, we're gonna add some definitions to comply with state law. We're gonna add a definition for agricultural employee housing, which is housing for agricultural employees on-site. We're gonna add a definition for agricultural use, which is commercial agricultural use on a parcel greater than five acres. And as we go through these, if anyone has any questions, I think it would be beneficial to stop on that slide, so that way we don't get lost and miss questions or anything like that. So, please interrupt me if you have questions. Continuing on with definitions, we're gonna add a definition for low-barrier navigation center, which is a service-enriched, short-term housing type designed to connect clients to services and permanent housing. And then we're also gonna add a definition for employee housing, which is private housing for fewer than five employees on-site. So, for public hearing, this comes from the Housing Crisis Act of 2019 or SB 330. The proposed ordinance would limit the number of public meetings for residential development projects to five. This would include workshops and things of that nature, not just your typical Planning Commission and Subcommittee meetings. And this has a sunset clause to end in January 1st of 2034. So, for our residential districts, Table 17.06030, the proposed ordinance would add employee housing and agricultural employee housing as a permitted use in all residential zones except the Hillside Residential Santa Margarita Preserve, and it would add community care facility and congregate care facility to all residentially-zoned districts as a permitted Continuing with our residential districts, we would add Note 6 to the table regarding maximum lot coverage relating to multifamily residential development. And for Section 17.06080, for our hillside development standards, this is kind of a cleanup item, we're gonna add a reference to the most current edition of the general guidelines adopted by the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. We're gonna add a section for residential districts for 17.06090, our objective of, objective design standards, and we're gonna specify that any residential development project submitted under any streamlined review process would be required to utilize the adopted objective design standards.
Mark, I'm sorry. Could you go back to the, the agricultural thing? I just have a quick question on that. So, it will be acceptable in all areas, correct? But it has to be tied to an agricultural use?
Commercial agricultural use on a lot greater than five acres.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the question. See if I can remember where I was. Okay. We just completed our objective design standards. So, and then we're gonna add a new section, 17.06100, for streamlined review, and it's just gonna add a new review, and it's just going to add a new section specifying that the city will conduct streamlined review for eligible projects. We're going to add a new section, section seventeen oh six one one oh, supportive housing, and this is going to specify when standards and processing of applications for supportive housing would apply. Specify that it be permitted by right in all zones where multifamily or mixed use is permitted, and if a project is developed within a half mile of a public transit stop, then no parking may be required for this project. For our commercial office and industrial district...
Sir, can you, can you go back?
Yes.
It doesn't matter the, the density of this, it's whatever's permitted, density-wise on the property, then they not require parking whatsoever.
Correct. If they're within a half mile of a public transit stop, then they are not required to have parking for the use. And that, that's state law, that's not...
So, then, sequel wouldn't apply in this matter where there wouldn't be a traffic study or anything?
Correct.
Is that half-mile defined in the...
It's a walking distance, so it'd be a walking path along the public travel sidewalks, crosswalks, things like that, not as crow flies.
So, I'm clear, then, if a house, let's say, butted up against a, the back of the house butted up against a public transit stop, but to get to that public transit stop, you had to walk a mile?
From what I understand, that would not count.
Okay. Thank you.
Getting back to our scheduled permitted uses for our commercial office and industrial districts, I just want to point out here, anything in red is new. These are all new uses here, previously. We have some conditionally permitted uses, but now, all these P's are due to state law changes. So, we are going to permit low-barrier navigation centers, supportive housing, and transitional housing in these zones as specified in front of you. And getting into our supplemental development standards, section seventeen ten oh two oh, it would clarify that parking for emergency shelters cannot be greater than another residential or commercial use in the same zone. And then, getting into our schedule of permitted uses for our public institutional districts, we would be permitting by right low-barrier navigation center, supportive housing, and Getting into our planned development overlay zones, eleven of the fifteen PDOs are proposed to be amended. PDOs number one, Palo Road, three, Nicholas Winchester PDO, nine, which is the hospital, and thirteen, Arbor Vista, are not proposed to be changed, they'll remain the same.
Maybe go back to that slide, let us digest that one. So, the eleven of fifteen PDOs are proposed to be amended. Can you list which ones those are again?
The eleven of fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it would be, so, if it's one, three, nine, and thirteen remain unchanged, then that means it's two, um, do you want me to go through and, and name them based on the code? Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
I think that just gives us a, a good idea of where this is going to be changed.
Okay, so, starting with PDO two, if you give me just one second to get to that question. PDO two is Margarita Road, planned development overlay district. PDO four is Temecula Creek Village. PDO five is Rendezvous. PDO six is Rancho Pueblo.
I have them in front of me, Marisol, if you want to take over.
I'm sorry?
I have them in front of me.
Oh, fantastic.
Okay. So, for PDO seven, that's Linfield Christian School. PDO eight is the Day Portola Road Planned Development Overlay District.
Wait, 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 don't go too fast. What was after Linfield?
Linfield is PDO seven. PDO eight is Day Portola Road. Number nine will not be changed. Number ten is the Temecula Education Center, which is off Diaz Road. PDO eleven is Miraloma. PDO twelve is Walcott Estates. PDO fourteen is the Gateway. And then, PDO fifteen is Cypress Ridge.
So, how, how are those specific locations decided on? Just curious.
It is based on their, the land uses they have. The, the ones that are remaining unchanged do not permit mixed use or multifamily residential uses on non-residential property, which would trigger these amendments.
Okay.
So, they are either single-family zones specifically, or they do not have commercial that permits residential or mixed use.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on that specifically? Okay. Thanks.
Getting into the actual changes to the PDOs, PDO number two, four, five, six, seven, ten, and fourteen would be amended to include low-barrier navigation centers, supportive housing, and transitional housing.
Okay. So, four is which one?
PDO, PDO four is Temecula Creek Village.
Okay. Five, Rendezvous?
Five is Rendezvous. Six is Rancho Pueblo.
Okay.
Seven is Linfield.
Okay.
Ten, ten is the Temecula Education Center. And then, fourteen is Gateway.
Okay. Thank you.
And our PDOs, numbers eight, which is Day Portola Road, eleven, which is Miraloma, PDO twelve, which is Walcott Estates, and number fifteen, which is Cypress Ridge, would be amended to include supportive housing, transitional housing, and accessory dwelling Some changes to our ADU law, chapter seventeen point two three, we're going to amend the definition of detached and attached ADU to specify that wall attachment can be existing and not a part of the residence. And we're going to amend the height limit for ADUs. This is based on some changes to state law. As our ordinance sits now, ADUs are capped at sixteen feet, detached, attached, doesn't matter, but changes to state law have made some amendments to that. It'll still be sixteen feet for a standard detached ADU, but if they are within a half mile of a public transit stop, they can go to eighteen feet, they get an additional two feet. If it is an attached ADU, they can go up to twenty-five feet, that is to match the design of the, of the residence, and then the pitch of the roof and everything like that that goes with it. And then, oh, forgive me, and then, property with a multifamily dwelling, that is two stories, they as well can go up to eighteen feet. So, those would be the changes to the ADU height limits. And then, we're going to limit front yard setbacks that would preclude construction of an eight-hundred-square-foot ADU. We are not permitting ADUs in the front yard, we are just saying that our setbacks cannot preclude the construction of that. And then, we are going to implement reasonable accommodation procedures for ADUs. And then, appeals is another clarification item. It's going to clarify that any action by the director of planning may be appealed to the planning commission. And our last change, yay, is our parking space. We're going to amend the parking requirements for multifamily residential projects of twelve units or less as follows. We're going to essentially require from two covered spaces per unit to one and a half spaces per unit. I know we have gone through a lot, did we want to go back to any slides or questions?
Did you have a question?
I have a couple, but...
Yeah, so, Gary and I sat on the subcommittee for this, so that's why maybe we don't have as many questions, but it's, it's, it's confusing. So, if you have any specific questions, first of all, maybe clarify the reason for these changes, too. Maybe start with that.
Uh, the, all these changes?
No, just like generally speaking, the reason for these changes that, that are happening in, in the housing element.
I'll take a crack at it. We promised to do these in our housing element. These were specific programs that were identified, and there's timelines in terms of implementation.
That the state is requiring it, is my point.
The state is requiring, that's correct.
Yeah, state is requiring it. So, that's, I think that's something we need to understand, number one, first of all, before we ask questions. We can ask questions, but unfortunately, the state is requiring it.
I would just add that in order to have our housing element certified, we had to agree to these programs.
Right. And we did it before time, which was amazing. Our city did.
Okay.
With that, questions? Let's start with Adam down here.
No, no questions. I was going to clarify kind of the same thing, because I'm, I'm obviously a little bit more involved with some of the housing element, and we've seen some challenges that other cities have faced, excuse me, that are not getting their housing elements approved. So, I was just going to kind of re-clarify exactly what you were saying, that these weren't just picked out of the air, or just something that staff decided, hey, let's just do this in Temecula, these are requirements to have our approved housing element, which might understand, again, that it was already adopted and approved. So, I, I appreciate the thoroughness of the report, and I have a little bit different understanding from another side of it, I'm glad that we're able to get an approval.
I think you, I think, Mark, you said that the appeal process can be appealed to the planning commission on a decision made by the planning director, is that...
That item was just a clarification in, within the code while we were doing this. As we were doing the ordinance, it's just a clarification item to specify that a decision by the planning director would be appealed to your, this body here.
And my question is, who has the appeal rights? The applicant, or does anybody have the ability to appeal a decision by the planning director to the planning commission?
From what I understand, it would be anybody.
Including the planning commission?
I believe that'd be a question for the city attorney.
I mean, I think arguably, anyone would have an opportunity to appeal a decision. The, the right to appeal is already within the code, this specific change deals with the reasonable accommodation provisions, just because we needed to clean up the language just to make it consistent with the rest of the code. So, that, this provision is already there, it's just now cleaning it up in the reasonable accommodation section.
I just have two questions, very small. For the new agricultural employee housing and the agricultural use, so for these new, like, say someone wants to come in and build thirty-six, what is it, thirty-six-bed building, is there already, do those already exist in Temecula where...
Not that I'm aware of.
No?
We, we have to permit it anywhere, we permit an agricultural use, and here in the city, we permit agricultural uses everywhere. So, we in defined agricultural use to include a commercial agricultural use on a parcel greater than five acres, to hopefully kind of keep that contained to our larger lots where agricultural uses are preferred.
And then, there's already development guidelines or standards for this type of, like, say if a project was to come?
I would have to check, but as this being a multifamily development, I would think it would have to follow our objective design standards.
Okay.
But I am not, I would...
That's correct, that's correct.
I'm kind of neat, I've never heard of this, so I was like, okay. I just want some clarification.
Yeah, if agricultural employee housing came in, they'd have to follow the objective design standards for multifamily.
And my last question is in the section seventeen point twenty-three point zero five zero, the ADU standards, there is something that says, the transfer of a sale or an ADU unless developed by a qualified nonprofit corporation and meet the requirements of the government's... Can you give me an example of what that means, like...
This would be if an ADU was developed by Bridge Housing, or one of our affordable housing developers, they could develop it, they would have to record several covenants, restrictions, and there's a whole bunch of extra studies and things that they have to do to sell the unit, but that is the only way by state law that you can sell a unit separate from its primary residence.
Oh, I understand, this is more for like multifamily, and, and then, within the multifamily, there's ADUs? Is that what this kind of applies to?
This would be, I believe, for any ADU.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or questions of staff?
Questions of staff, no.
Any other questions of staff? Okay.
I just, oh, I just need to finish up my sequel determination.
Yes, yes.
Finish that up in my recommendation.
Go ahead and finish.
Leave that part out. Okay, so, staff has determined that this project is exempt from further environmental review per sequel guideline, section one five one six two. This project is an implementation, implementing action of an already-approved project, adoption of the housing element, and no further environmental review is required. Staff, staff's recommendation is to adopt the PC resolution recommending the city council adopt the ordinance, and find the project exempt from further environmental review per California Environmental Quality Act, section one five one six two, subsequent EIRs and negative declarations. Complete my report?
Any other questions of staff before I ask for public comments? Any other questions? Okay, do we have any public comments?
We have none.
Okay, we have none. So, all right, so I don't need to open the public hearing, we have no comments, correct? All right, so, discussion? Any discussion by my colleagues?
Not much of a discussion, I just, because I've dealt with some housing element stuff before, I just kind of want to clarify, and please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but the housing element member is just a, a requirement that the city's provide an opportunity for some of these to happen, that the, it's not that, hey, we just approved these type of agricultural houses or that kind of stuff. And, and a lot of times, that gets mixed up in these conversations, so I just kind of wanted to reiterate that this housing element is providing that opportunity as required by state, it's not that we're just sat here and said, we're going to do this.
That means that it's going to happen, right.
Exactly.
Any other discussion?
No.
No? All right, so, we have this item, we need to make a motion and a second at this time, if anyone would like to do that?
I will move the item as recommended by staff.
And do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion by Adam Ruiz, and a second by Fernando. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayyy.
Aye with the provision that I don't think we have a cho, a choice.
I know. All right, and, all right, so, motion carried, and thank you, Mark, for that presentation. I know there was a lot of work that went into that, that, a lot of, of the duck under the water going on here that we can't see, so, thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner reports at this time, do we have any?
Uh, just a comment, I missed an opportunity earlier, but with the complete streets, I don't know if you guys remember, but I think it was earlier this year, at one of the conferences I attended, the concept of street, complete streets came up, and I remember sitting there thinking, wow, we're already doing this, like, and, and it does feel like that, so, I, I, just another kudos to staff and everybody here at Temecula, it's nice to hear these kind of presentations, but know that it's nothing brand-new to us, you know, we've, I think we've kind of thought through this, now having, you know, pen to paper and having a policy in place is, is always good practice, I think, but it's, it's nice that we've had this conversation and this concept worked on before. Just missed that opportunity earlier, thank you.
Gary, anything?
I will just add to Adam's comments, I think, I'm not sure if the city's going back and looking at actions that they've taken to correct any problems that may have arisen. I know there's a couple of roads that are, that have been changed, and the congestion has increased, but I, you know, I could name specifics later, but I just hope that the city has the ability to go back and revise that if necessary, is that correct, Matt?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Ron, with regard to signal timing and other changes, we can go back and make adjustments, and I, I think it's constantly being monitored.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it's constantly being monitored, we continue to have that in place so that we can adjust on the fly, we still have, even though the synchronization of everything has happened, we're still having to go back and change things because of adjustments we've seen in the field.
Yeah, and not just lights, but turn lanes and that type of thing.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
We've adopted some right turn lanes at certain areas that have really resulted in, in added congestion, because you've taken away, that's all. I'm, I'm sure you're always looking at those problems and, and trying to figure out solutions when they, when they come up, and certainly, I would expect if somebody says, oh, I think we made a mistake on this and we should go back and change it, you have the ability to do that?
That happens all the time.
Okay, thanks, Ron.
There's also a lot going on with the freeways, both our construction and then down in Escondido, that's affecting traffic. down in Escondido, that's affecting traffic here. So we can, we can have it all dialed in, we can be good for a few weeks, and then something happens on the freeway, we get more traffic, and this, the timing's thrown off.
Fernando, anything?
I think it's a lot of great information, and complete streets, I remember when I was in college, I studied that, so, actually.
Here you are.
Looking at it again.
There you are, awesome.
But overall, I think it's great. And I think I've seen some of the streets already painted green, and there's, I've seen some improvements in the last couple of years, so it's out there.
Okay, thank you. So, appointments are being made for commissioners next Tuesday at city council. I have applied for the next term. I will be out of town for family emergency, but I'm hoping to be appointed again, and anyway, if I'm not, this might be my last meeting, what can I say? I don't know. Anyway, I appreciate everybody's comments tonight and everything that staff is doing to keep us informed, and I think what I would say that I have seen in my tenure here, which has been nine years, over nine years as planning commissioner, is that our city acts proactively, and I feel like we're ahead of the curve, and we're throwing a lot of curves, and especially with state mandates, and it's really frustrating. It's frustrating for me, and I'm not the one dealing with it specifically, so I appreciate staff giving us the information ahead of time so that we know what, you know, kind of what we can and can't fight, I guess, in a way, and what we can, I feel like Temecula as a whole does the best they can with what we can do, and I think that we need to continue on that track, like finding ways to do the right thing even if we're mandated to do the wrong thing. I don't know, like, like, you know, people that I know that moved here, we moved here, there's a reason people moved here, and we want to keep that reason, we want to have that reason for living here. So anything that staff can do to help us, you know, be more informed about those kind of things coming down the pipe, and, which I think you all do a great job with, we appreciate it, and within the subcommittees and bringing them information here. So thank you for all you guys do, and welcome, Matt, thank you, you're doing a great job stepping into that role and having to kind of be that guy, the last, do we need a Burger King hat, or, does that say it was Luke? Okay, I'll bring it next time, okay. All right, any other comments from our commissioners? Gary?
Yes, I just want to say I'm relieved and happy that you are reapplying for the position on the planning commission. For whatever it's worth, we need you on the commission, you are our most senior member, and you have the experience, and we do have new members on, so for continuity sakes, I hope the councils, in their infinite wisdom, decides that you are able to be reappointed.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, do we have any subcommittee reports?
We did have a subcommittee report, our meeting today, municipal code, with some annual updates, a couple of, I think one or two to Title V and a couple to Title 17, just kind of the annual update corrections that need to go. I do think it's commendable, as I mentioned in the meeting, staff will kind of keep a log as questions, you know, repeat questions come in from applicants and stuff that, oh, you know, we need to make sure we correct that, and they'll take note of that so we have those corrections move forward. I think we all know that sometimes you get really close to something and you see it and you read it one way, because you interpret it that way, but if there's missing something in there and it's seen a lot, so I appreciate that they're able to track all that stuff when those, when these corrections come forward, it's always real simple, there's not a whole lot of, a whole lot of change, but they're the necessary changes to make things cleaner for our applicants, and that'll become for us, I believe, in two weeks or the next commission meeting.
Okay, awesome, thanks for that report. Any other subcommittee reports? Okay, all right. Matt, anything from our assistant director?
I think I'd just like to add, on behalf of staff, that we hope you get reappointed as well.
Well, you know who to talk to if I don't.
And then, no other business items, but I'd like to just announce there were a couple of births in the department, Luke's wife had a baby, and so did Brandon, Brandon's wife had a baby, so in the last three weeks, two new additions.
So we have Little Ford, and we have Little- He had a girl, right?
Emily Rose.
Emily.
Emily?
Emily Rose.
Emily Rose, oh, that's exciting.
Yeah.
That's awesome, and I hear there's going to be more.
Future planners. Yeah, there are a couple more.
There's something in the drinking water over in Planning.
None much.
Okay, all right, thanks for that. Ron, Public Works?
Yeah, French Valley continues to go strong, it's been going very, very well as far as scheduling, so we're anticipating that we'll be on track even with the rains that we may end up getting this coming winter. Nicholas Gersol also, they are bidding out the culverts next, so that work continues on. And then kind of in line with what you were saying, asking about Gary, the Lestonic Signal on Butterfield Stage Road was activated, so that is now in place, and that's one where we're gathering feedback right now because it is affecting the turning movement out of Rancho Vista. So we are gathering some data because it's affecting driver expectations, kind of the queuing, and so we may have to make some adjustments there, too. So that's an example of, I think, what you're talking about when we implement certain things. So then otherwise, you know, any questions you might have for Public Works, I can answer.
Also, also the light just beyond Sommers Bend, like that one?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Like, that seems like a weird one.
The Myriad Hot Springs one?
Uh-huh.
Where you make the turn?
Uh-huh.
There was no good answer for that one, because eventually Butterfield Stage Road, if the county ends up doing development plans the way their circulation, circulation element shows, Butterfield Stage would go straight and turn into Poroy. So there was supposed, there was the need for the signal there, we wanted the developer to put it in now rather than later at some date and be stuck, yeah, so we wanted it in, so we kind of had to make it very similar to Citricato Parkway out in Escondido where, yes, you go and you just make a left, and, you know, there's, you might think there's no reason for the signal.
Right.
But it serves a purpose down the road, plus it gives us fiber optic connectivity to the rest of our signals, so it has a little bit of purpose there.
A little bit.
A little bit, yeah, but I know, I know it's an awkward movement.
Yeah.
And we've made a lot of adjustments there, too.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thanks for that explanation, that helps a little bit.
I got one quick question if I can.
Yeah.
On Nicholas, as construction continues there, will that ever be temporarily shut down from, like during that whole path all the way through?
There will be some intermittent detours that may have to occur, where traffic going eastbound, that would normally turn on Gersol, we're going to have them turn off before that, Medusa, and have them go down that way. But that would be sporadic, it's not going to be a full detour in place for a long amount of time, it's just to flop traffic over when we're doing the various lane configurations. So that, that will get you apprised of situations like that, but they won't be long detours.
It won't be long, okay.
As far as duration, calendar duration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of Ron, or anybody? Do you want to just hang out, or shall we go? Okay, we can go. All right, meeting is adjourned. See you November 1st, the next scheduled meeting, thank you.